Entertaining motion to approve the agenda. All right, so. And next on the agenda is the opening.
Right here at front.
She's coming.
May I have a hand over there? They have a win. I, Roy Max Jr.
I, Roy Max Raider Jr.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers and authorities which are or may be established for the government thereof.
And to the constitutional powers which may be established for the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state.
And I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with the Constitutional of the Constitution of the United States to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
Not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Our first thing for tonight is the concession. So we approve the April, October 8th, 2024 concession.
Mr. Mayor, before we approve the concession, I just want to make sure, I noticed in the amendment to waste industries, there was not a timeframe to terminate that contract before the end of next year. Are we still on schedule to go out and rebid on that in March so we don't end up where we were last year? Is that what we're planning on doing?
Yes, we could give in Skype and schedule to go back to get it out.
Okay.
Do a survey and to get it out.
Okay. I make a motion we approve the concession.
The same. I'll vote. So, and the next one is approving the amendment to refuse contract or potential establishment.
And to carry all of those items, or number six, the public company. Yes, sir.
Now, a public company?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we do the introduction of new hire, Kim.
I don't think he's here, but we do have a new Kayla, I want to talk about. He just started, he has a young family, he's here in town, he's looking for a, you know, a career, something local that he could work for with his family, and he's very excited to be here. He went full on headstrong the first week, he's been doing great, we're really happy to have him.
As I was.
Austin, he did public works.
The next thing on the agenda is individuals who wish to address the board, ask by their names to address the record and come forward, and this is not about the, um, public zoning stuff.
Correct, this is, yeah.
This is just public here, public comment, not, not public here.
Anybody want to address, address the, uh? Seeing nobody come forward, uh, let's move on to the parlor. Resource Police Plan Inspection, is any reports?
The only question I had in the police report is sounding like we had some applicants coming in, does, does our new payment plan seem to be going successful with that?
We are making two offers today, we made two offers, or I signed two offer letters today.
For sergeants or for patrol?
They were for patrol.
So, but let me ask you a question, how old is Sam for the sergeant position?
I also signed the letter for a active duty sergeant today, um, to start December the 23rd. That would be within the already employed, so he'll be active sergeant, um, yeah, so we have one of us.
So after December 3rd, 23rd?
23rd, he'll be active sergeant, yes.
But that includes the two active, was that the side?
That's the side, that's the sergeant, yeah, the other two were just patrol positions.
So, next is the public hearing on RZ 23410.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner. Um, this is a public hearing, it is a legislative hearing, so there will be no need for sworn testimony, uh, but it's for a subdivision out on Dog Eye Road. The case is RZ 2024 10th, uh, the owner, the applicant is Wayne Baker with Tupelo Honey Development. Um, the owner, property owner is Gene Elwood Parker. It is a 31.64 acre tract, um, with a total of 3.37 acres plus or minus the development. There we go. Um, the current use is vacant land, um, uh, this is a little difficult to see, but it's on Dog Eye Road, just before you get into the big curve that heads to the north. Uh, the planning board heard this case on December the 3rd, um, you're hearing it tonight, final action to be determined tonight. Uh, the adjacent zoning and land uses to the north, it's residential 30, to the south, it's residential 30, uh, to the east, it's residential 30, to the west, it is a combination of residential 30 and R11, and to the southwest, it's residential 11. Uh, the project data is that it's a 31.64 acre tract located on the south of the intersection of Dog Eye Road and East Stony Brook Court. Their request is to rezone from R30 to residential R11, CZ, the CZ stands for conditional zoning, so there, there are some conditions that we'll go over in a minute to approach that. The annexation of this property will be required if so approved. As part of the request, the applicant is proposing a single-family residential subdivision of 12 lots. The applicant requests a minimum lot size of no less than 20,000 square feet, where 11,000 square feet is the minimum for the R11 zoning. Uh, the smallest proposed subdivision lot is actually going to be 24,000 square feet, which is lot number eight. The applicant is proposing 11.8 acres of open space for this project. Uh, normally, we would only have 1,245 square feet per lot for a total of 14,940, so there's a significant open space component to this development. The uses are for the, uh, it can be, well, let me back up here, the area outlined in red on the map to the left is the track of land. It almost looks like it's two pieces of land on that, on the map, but right in the middle, kind of in the hourglass, uh, hourglass narrowest point, there's what's called a choke point, which is the property is only about 30 feet wide at that point. Uh, but it is two separate tracks, and, uh, the map to the right is the future land use map, and it's contained in the area, it's yellow up there, which, uh, you can kind of see right there is the track. And the yellow indicates that it's medium density residential. In page two of your agenda packet, uh, this list of proposed, uh, uses that could be in the R11 district is given for your reference. Uh, some, uh, statistics as far as the requirements on the lots, um, there are a minimum 11,000, remember, he's only requesting, uh, the 12, the smallest lot will be 24,000, and is, the minimum lot width will be 70 feet, the street yard 30 feet, side yards 10 feet, uh, rear yard is 25 feet, the height, maximum height of the building is 35 feet. Can be no more than, um, 35% building coverage in the subdivision, and the impervious area cannot exceed 50%. Access to the property will be off of Dog Eye Road. And, um, let's see, it will require a perimeter landscaping and also street trees, and, um, these will be landscaped in accordance with the UDO. A neighborhood meeting was held on November the 18th, 2024, there were 25 people in attendance, and Mr. Baker and Mr. Roberts answered questions regarding the lot size, number of homes, types of home, landscape, and open space. The plan is consistent with the comprehensive land use plan, and it is also consistent with the adjacent zoning. The, uh, there is a site plan package, a site plan of the development in your packet, which is page six to 11, uh, there are 12 lots, three of them front, uh, Dog Eye Road, the other eight lots are off of the cul-de-sac. The cul-de-sac will be curved and gutted and have sidewalk on it. Um, staff recommendations are, um, in the application for residential R11 CZ, conditional zoning, the applicant requests the condition of the zoning to be set a minimum of lot size between 1,000 square feet. The property is currently vacant. The request for rezoning is compatible with the existing residential R11 to the west and southwest, and the request is compatible also with the residential 30 because the minimum lot size proposed will be 24,000 square feet actually. The applicant's request rezoning from R30 to R11 CZ, conditional zoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the adjacent zoning business. Um, the staff recommendations are that this request be reasonable to the surrounding community based on the surrounding essence of the property and adjacent zone. Staff recommends that the rezoning request be approved proposed by the applicant, now that is with conditions. During the discussion, uh, the staff recommendations, they are listed on pages seven and eight, 18 of them, those are standard that we require of all subdivisions. But over on, um, page nine of 11, uh, in discussions with the planning board last week, um, uh, the applicant offered some additional conditions which are included in here, there are five of them. One is the minimum lot size will be 20,000, but if in actuality, the minimum lot's going to be 24. Only single-family residences will be constructed, each lot shall contain only one single-family residence. The minimum heating square footage of each single-family residence shall be no less than 2,500 square feet, excluding an attached two-car garage. And the exterior walls of residence shall be fully covered with brick, stone, veneer, or masonry, or hardy plank siding. Which hardy plank, for your information, is a, it's a cement product that's used for siding in, in wood, so it has much, it weathers much better. Uh, the planning board recommended this rezoning, uh, request be approved with the conditions as I just listed. So tonight, um, they have sent their forward, uh, their recommendation to you, we're asking the board of commissioners to review it with the criteria that's on page 10 of your packet. Uh, the seven conditions there you must take into consideration, and we've provided for you a motion approved and a motion denied. So if you have any questions, I stand open for any questions.
They usually we do four for, that's up to you as the chairman.
Anybody else, Mr. Ramon?
You're good.
At this time.
This is not quite the initial, Paul started off with that, this is legislative, so which one testimony, you can consider anything you want to consider pretty much, as long as it's not arbitrary, uh, you can hear from anybody who, um, that can offer any kind of information, you can pretty much consider what you choose, what you like.
So I guess then we're going to start with anybody who wants to come and speak, that's four, this, uh, this, the approval of this, um, bill.
Thank you. Wayne Baker, 149 South Bloodwork Street, uh, I'm the applicant, and we were approached about the parkers indicating this land will be made available, and Terry Gilbert, who worked with me, had known the parkers, uh, for a long time, got to talking, went and looked at the land, and, uh, looked like it was a possibility. Dog Eye's got beautiful roads, beautiful homes, and, uh, so we got under contract and, uh, worked with Timmons Group on the engineering side to come up with a plan to see if it's feasible. We did soils work to see what type soils, uh, would work, and we got good soils on that field in front. Engineering, we talked to DOT, we met with your utilities department out there for sewer and water, and indications were that it would handle a 12-unit, uh, community out there. And so what we propose is 12 homes, and if you'll notice on the plan, we tried to make sure that we kept with the quality of the homes that were on Dog Eye Road, uh, and kept three, what I call estate lots facing Dog Eye, and then the other two where you turn in on the street, so all the homes would face Dog Eye. Uh, so we didn't go in with, with the cul-de-sac where you see the back of, of homes. And again, we had no problem agreeing to the conditions because we wanted bigger lots so we could have bigger homes, kind of estate-type homes. Single-family wood, no, no, no wood siding, it will be all a masonry-type siding, whether it be brick, uh, or stone, or the hardy plank. Minimum 2,500, I expect, that's a minimum, I expect, most of them will be larger than that. When you look at putting utilities and streets in and all that, it, with the cost, it's going to have to be homes that are comparable to what's already on Dog Eye.
Do you feel like that the cul-de-sac, only way to get into phase two or the property behind the, um, behind the subdivision, is the road that you got cut? That's going to give you enough area to go on the back?
That, it won't be an engineering question, I'll bet.
Not engineer.
That's fine, we can, we can tag-team this, we did rehearse it, and a lot of the things Wayne said, I was going to say, Keith Roberts, civil engineer, land planner for the project, uh, the back part, it.
The address as well, right?
Uh, 202 Monica Creek Drive in Garner. It, there, at, at the moment, we, we don't anticipate doing any development on the backside, that pinch point there is only 30 feet wide, and the minimum width you have to have for a public road is 50 feet. So at the moment, in the back, it's just open space or reserved on or in the future, but at the moment, it's basically undevelopable back there, in my opinion, unless some additional land, neighbors, or, you know, down the road, if someone wants to join or add some land with this, maybe something could be done at that time, and then we would, you know, come back before you guys again, if it's what's possible, but as far as this project goes, it's not possible to do anything on the backside.
But the biggest part of your property is back there, and you're going to develop the front part, and, uh, looks like that'd be a waste.
It, it, it is, and it, and it isn't, I guess, in a way, uh, Johnston County, uh, stormwater rules. Basically, you know, we don't want to go out there and have to put in big stormwater ponds and be an eyesore, where you see a lot of developments going in that are high-density, do a lot of SCMs, and Johnston County stormwater, and I, I talked to Jessica Batt in, in Johnston County about this, and basically, if you're at 15% pervious in that area or less, you shouldn't have to do anything. And when Mr. Baker told me the sized homes he wanted to build out there, I basically said, well, to do that, you really need probably, you know, 10,000 square feet of pervious per lot, to be able to get the garages in, maybe a sidecar garage, hardscapes, pools, and that sort of stuff. And so basically, I backed into the calculations, um, estimating on the, and on the subdivision map that shows the estimated impervious on there, and then stayed within that 15% range. The 11 acres is kind of what I needed in the back for open space to make the whole sum of it be, you know, 15%.
So this property backs up the property that we're talking about, that is undeveloped, uh, undevelopable right now, it backs up to Dunn Property, that backs up to 242? So the Dunn Property and this property do join?
Yes, sir.
So the only access that you've got to this property right here is that one little strip, 12-foot?
About 32. 32, about 32, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I just don't have a problem with it, I just have a, uh, a concern just exactly how you were going to get back to it when y'all decided to start developing it. Unless the owner back here, which it says reserved by owner, unless you're going to put a big house back there yourself, but you're going to use this little road to get to it.
That, that's the only option at the moment, you couldn't go back there and put one big house, but other than that, I don't see any options of doing anything else, and if anything else was done, of course, we'd have to go back through the process again.
All right. That was the only question I had.
I would just like to add one thing about conditional zoning, you're approving the plan as you see it in the packet. If they change anything, for example, if they develop that eight acres back there.
Right.
They would have to come back through the same process, so it's not like you're approving something that you don't know what you're approving, they have to come back if they do anything more than that one lot back there. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to come and speak in favor? Anyone else like to come speak in favor? Or anyone else like to come speak in favor? Now, would anyone like to come speak, that's in opposition?
Good evening, my name is Derek Fitzgerald, I live in 504 Dog Eye, uh, I don't know if I would consider my stance in opposition more informative. So at the initial meeting, I went to, I was, I was asking about, um, major or minor special use under the Benson UDC. They explained to us that there would be major or minor special use, they did not say which one, along with that R11, I'm trying to figure out if anyone on the board knows what that may be, and if so, why would there be a major or minor special use when everything that they are wanting is covered under the, um, just the basic R11?
I think I'd have to ask Paul.
Um, staff does not attend the neighborhood meeting, uh, that is held by the proposed developer in regard to that, so I can't say what the discussion was, but the purpose of conditional zoning is, is that you have to put on the table upfront everything that you're asking for, which they're asking for, 12-lot subdivision, they've gave, given the concessions on the house and everything. So there are really no special use associated with this. The, um, if it were special uses put on it, and they met the requirement of a straight R11, then that's all you can control, is what the special use says you can control. In other words, if it's a, um, if they put on there, um, and you can't, you can't negotiate the conditions, it has to be a, a pre-existing requirement that's there, maybe the town attorney can explain it better than I, but, um, special uses are, that, if you meet the requirements that are in the UDO, you can't deny it, is basically what it means. This, the conditional zoning that we're using now was put into the general statutes about three years ago, and it's becoming more the way to negotiate the development as opposed to meeting the requirements precisely.
So you're saying it just works?
I think the difference is that, is when we, when we were under the redo of the UDO, conditional zoning came effective, and what it is, is allowed us to have more control to require the developer to do more things versus when we were under our old UDO, or still in our old UDO, it was, this is R11, as long as you meet those requirements, so us as board members couldn't vote it down. But if we voted it down, they could go get their attorney, and their attorney say, we've met all of that, that's in your book, and your personal opinion or personal wants don't matter. And so we switched over about a year and a half ago, or two years ago, to conditional rezoning to give us the ability to put in there that even though it's R11, which is a minimum of 11,000 square foot lots, now we can say, hey, we're approving this based on your request of a minimum of 20,000 square foot lots, so that he can't go back to R11, he has to meet that condition that we're putting on when we approve it or deny it, and.
So then I guess my question would be, why would we be, um, contemplating rezoning this from R30 if that captures all the requirements that they want anyway? So I'm looking at, at the.
R30, R30 would be a 30,000, R30 would be a 30,000 square foot lot, and he's asking to go below that.
You say minimum, that's what.
Yeah, R30 is R30,000, he's asking to go to below that, which in our, in our book is, right now would be R20, but I don't think R20 exists in our current zoning plan.
I, I don't see it here.
Yeah.
So what I'm, I'm looking at in this chart, and I, I pulled this from the Benson site, um, so R11 has P meaning permitted in specific things, uh, single-family detached, zero lot line, alley loaded, then all the others have a special use exception or, um, I'm not even sure, it just says minor, minor special use is C, and major special use is S. So all the ones with S say things like two-family, townhouse, apartment, upper-story residential, adult care home, so what prevents something like that happening? So let's say, because this is going to be a phased process, they're going to build home by home by home, they build one or two homes, they do not sell one or two homes, what's to prevent them from changing as long as they've met that R11 zoning requirement, to throw an adult care home in there, or a church, or, or whatever, instead of housing?
So the way it's being presented tonight is, is an R11 with special conditions, which those conditions are single-family homes not less than 2,500 square feet, from what I read, and then a minimum 20,000 square foot lot. That S in that book and that UDO stands for special use permit, which means if they did anything to alter any of the conditions that they've asked for, if they need, if they need us to, if they need to make a lot less than 20,000 square foot, or if they need to do something other than single-family, they would have to come back and ask us permission to be able to modify what their approval is, is the way I understand it, is that right, Paul?
That's correct.
And I don't see what the application packet is, so I'm just asking that for, for my own education.
That's fine, perfect.
Um, another thing that I had a concern about at the initial meeting was looking at the plans, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, I was told July, August timeframe that we share water distribution with McGee's Crossroad, I don't know if anyone can hear that, or confirm that?
We share with Johnston County, and we also share with Dunn.
Right.
We follow water.
And Hornet County.
Don and Johnson.
Yeah, yeah, that's great.
Because I had a water pressure issue in my residence this summer, and they told me that it was possibly related to, at peak times, they push water to McGee's Crossroads because they had some issue out there. Um, so now you look at our road, Dog Eye Road, 12-inch main, now with this proposed subdivision, they're going to take an eight-inch tap coming off of that, and then throw a six-inch pipe into the subdivision. Well, how is that going to affect our water pressure on Dog Eye, we're already having, um, issues, number one, number two, will that, um, require another tap off of that 12-inch main to make those, um, I guess the luxury homes, the large lots, provide them with water, or are those going to be well-inseptic?
Are you going to answer that?
I was right here.
Wayne's going to say, I can give you part of that.
Okay.
And I'll be giving part of it.
Yeah, and I was going to say, is, was it just that one time, or are you having pressure issues multiple times throughout the year, and are you letting us know?
It was that one time.
One time, okay, okay.
We had a failure on 242 of our main line coming in, and it took like three days to, to get what we needed, uh, and we also had, I think, a water boil point that feeds what you're talking about, it feeds over towards Dog. you're talking about. It feeds over towards Dog Eye. I don't know the dates of it, but I do know it was hot. It was hot weather.
Um, we, we did look into that, uh, and I got with the, the public, uh, the water guys and talked to them about it. They've been monitoring the water pressure out there for a number of years. And, um, what the problem is, is the county's booster pumps, when they, they transfer water from Benson to some other elevated tank and when the pumps come on, it causes a pressure differential and it drops. But the minimum pressure required by the state with, um, no fire flow is 30 gallons, uh, 30 PSI and at, uh, with fire flow, it's 20 PSI. And the, they've monitored it at several different locations out on Dog Eye and it varies anywhere from about 115 down to about 45 on normal days. But when they do cut the pumps on them, it will drop it for the period of time that the county's pumping water. Nothing we can do about it. It's not the system. A 12 inch main would supply much more water to a lot, a lot larger area than Dog Eye. That's a lot of water. They can go through a 12 inch main. So it's the county's pressure system. Uh, can that be fixed in the future? Well, the county might be able to do it, uh, sometime in the future, but we haven't talked to them yet.
Did that answer your question?
That answered his question.
Uh, and there's still a concern to me.
Coming from that side and it, and just, sorry, he asked us.
Oh, you're fine.
He was asking about the elevated storage tank, if that would help. The, the line that we're talking about is the Johnson County West Side feeder. It comes in and it does make a loop around Dog Eye, the school, that area. And just like everybody has said, it creates a negative vacuum when they pump to McGee's to that tower. So our tower, no, will not positively affect that area of pressure issues.
Because now with 12 new houses, we will have additional pressure issues is another concern. Uh, and then another issue or concern that I had. So at the initial meeting, I just did an informal query of everyone that was in attendance and more than half of the people there have homes that are larger than 3,000 square feet, myself included. And I did not make the board, uh, planning board meeting last week, I think it was. I had something that I could not get out of. And I understand there were conditions met. Uh, my concern is for property value for those of us that do have homes over 3,000 square feet. And that's the majority of houses on Dog Eye Road. I know that will not affect, uh, those negatively who have houses that are at or near that square footage, but for those of us with larger ones, that's, that's a little bit of a concern for myself. So I don't know if there's anything that may be able to be addressed on that end or if that needs to be taken into consideration for the approval process.
Again, um, general statutes speak to this pretty specifically. Uh, the town can regulate land use. We cannot regulate what a house looks like or not, except through the CC zoning process. And the, the, the meeting that he's referencing, the planning board meeting last week, a, a lot of folks spoke to the fact of a minimum of 2,500 square feet, a minimum of a two car, uh, separate garage above that, uh, 2,500 square feet. So all the houses going to be with the garage in excess of, uh, 3,000 square feet. Um, so you can't really re- regulate architecture, except through the CC zoning process. That's one reason why they chose to go this way. Um, so with that being said, Ike might be able to address that a little bit more, but, um, uh, as far as mine, some of you can't regulate architectural components except in general terms.
That's right. And, and the thing to remember here is the additional conditions, whether the ones that the applicant has come forward voluntarily or that were then discussed at the planning, uh, board meeting and the applicant acquiesced to, the applicant has to agree, has to be mutual agreement with the town and the applicant. You can impose certain additional conditions. If they don't agree, then you don't have a, you don't have valid condition for zoning because they have to agree to whatever stipulation. When it comes to something like design standards that Paul's talking about or you, Jim's talking about, you, you can't mandate that on the developer. They can voluntarily say, well, I'll, uh, do a minimum of 2,500, I'll go with a 2,500 square feet, but we're, I'll only use certain materials for the slab or something like that. They've done that, but you can't, we can't mandate that they, that they use particular materials or mandate design standards. Unless they want to offer that, then what most of it's that.
Aside from that, I have nothing further. Thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak in opposition?
I'm ready to make the motion that we approve. I make a motion that we approve. Please, I want to have a guidance.
Here, you can.
Yeah, I can have that.
Based on the condition that they're proposing.
That's all right. I got this. All right. It says, motion to grant rezoning request RZ 2024 dash 10, Dog Eye Road, upon findings that the rezoning is reasonable based on all the above approval, approval, criteria one through seven being found in the affirmative and that the planned development advances the public's interest. Does that mean? Okay. So that's my motion.
Including the five.
Including the five.
Conditions.
Of, of course, including the five conditions.
Okay. Then we got a motion on the floor. Anything more ready to go? I want to say.
Hi.
Unlike the last hearing, this one will be a quasi judicial hearing because it is for a special use permit. And, um, so it will require the person swearing in, anyone who's going to testify.
Okay. Raise your right hand, place your left hand. Do you swear and tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth that has helped you, God?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. If, uh, as we go through this, if it looks very familiar, it's because it is. Uh, this was a special use permit of originally three parcels of land, uh, due to, uh, grant applications and engineering design. Um, the, uh, other two tracks cannot be developed at the current time, uh, but the, uh, property owner and developer would like to proceed with at least part of the project at this time. So this was pulled out of the original zoning packet and it's coming back to you again for approval. It's the same plan, the same, uh, as it was before, but instead of 12 units, I think we're down to four now. Okay. This is special use permit 2024 oh six, South Blackman Street Town Homes. It's, uh, the applicant is Blake Dinning. The owner of the property is Seamount Properties of Dunn LLC. It's roughly a half acre lot. Uh, the current zoning is residential R11. The planning board had its hearing on December the third and has forwarded the year recommendation. And the Board of Commissioners, uh, is asked to consider it tonight and take final action on it tonight. The adjacent zoning and land uses to the north is residential and it's R11. To the south, it's R11 and R6 is also residential. To the east, it's residential R6 and to the west, it's residential R11. Um, the area that you see in red, right there, is the project site. Uh, and, um, there will be four townhomes on this. And a request for a special use permit for four townhomes, single family townhome complex located within the city limits of the town of Benson, as depicted on the attached plan and building elevations with four plans. In a normal R11 development, the front yard setback would be 30 feet, the side yard 10, the side street 20, the rear, uh, property line 25 feet, the building height, the maximum of 35 feet, the building coverage 35% and the impervious coverage a maximum of 50%. Um, on page three of your packet, excuse me, uh, this is the, on the left is the current zoning of the property. The blue indicating one zoning district, the green the other. And the comprehensive plan is showing this as a moderate, it's a moderate, uh, density residential. On page three, you have a site plan of the property on the top part of the page and on the bottom part, you have a front elevation. This is identical to what was submitted and approved before. We just took it out of that application packet and put it in this The floor plans are on page, uh, four, which it has the first floor plan and the second floor plan. These are all three bedroom townhome units with a single car garage. Uh, access will be from South Blackman Street, which is a town of Benson, maintained street. Uh, the comprehensive land use plan recommends medium density residential there for this. As in compliance with that, the physical characteristics, uh, of the neighborhood is predominantly single family residential. The area is primarily zoned R11 and R6. Uh, the units themselves, uh, the end units will be point one, two acres, point one, nine acres, size each. The interior units will be point 10 and 11 acres. The units, uh, will have front loaded, single car garages. For the driveways at the front of the townhomes, the units will have a shared driveway. Uh, neighborhood meeting was conducted on November 21st, uh, 2024. No one was in attendance. Uh, staff comments are that the plan meets the town of Benson unified development ordinance for required setbacks for the development with a modification to the front yard setback, which was granted in the original SUP and will be required to meet the landscaping and parking requirements for the townhomes. Um, staff recommendations are listed on page six and seven. These are the standard, uh, or excuse me, page six. These are the standard recommendations that would be, uh, associated with the townhome development. The planning board on December the third, uh, voted the adoption case number, uh, SUP 2024 oh six, uh, to allow construction of four unit townhome complexes, complex to be placed on subject property. Uh, the approval was seven, uh, to make unanimous, uh, made a unanimous vote to recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners. If, um, if the Board of Commissioners seeks to grant approval, the following must be determined to be met. If the Board seeks to grant or deny, they must be determined to be followed, uh, that following is not met. Uh, if you like, I would gladly read those if you, uh, they're on page seven, uh, on your, in your packet. Do you want me to read them or?
We'll, we'll read them to ourselves.
I'm sorry.
We'll read them to ourselves.
Okay. Okay. There is a draft motion to approve, deny, uh, there at the bottom of page seven. And then attached at the back is the new application packet that was received for these four units. So with that, um, I would ask that the, um, the packet itself be presented as evidence in my testimony and in evidence, uh, to the, to the special
I, so I wish to commit this.
I'm sorry.
You got anything else? I was going to go to the, go ahead. You finish, man.
I, I'm sorry. I didn't hear you.
You said, you said, I was going to go to the who's for, who's against.
Oh, okay.
All right. So before you, Mr. Mayor, before you, before you go there, I know you've seen this before, uh, where a version of this is similar, this is different. I never understand the limitations in the report and why the applicants come back when they modify SUP supporting, call revoked, uh, the original SUP for stormwater to have nothing to do with it. Um, however, I mean, I've asked this question about this particular development or a larger, uh, iteration of it before. It is always good to call for disclosure of any ex parte communications, conflicts of interest, uh, fixed opinions or bias that the board needs to disclose. Didn't have any the last time, but since we're on the record, I always want to do that in a quasi judicial hearing, which this is, making sure there aren't any. And now would be the time to ask the
There's a different heading conference.
That's, that's all I had.
Ma'am, um, anybody for court? If you'd like to come and speak this way, please, do you name any threads?
Blake Dinning, PO Box 238, Benson, North Carolina.
Can you just raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth that has helped you, God?
Yes, ma'am. The owner of the property is here to answer any questions that you may have. We were here a few months, a year ago. Just nothing's changed really, just a number of properties.
Only thing you're doing different is doing four at this time instead of 12?
Yeah, unfortunately, we're not able to do the whole project that we're intending to do because of stormwater easement issue in the town. So we're just shrinking the project and hopefully we'll come back at another time and do something different with those properties once they're available to do something with.
So tell me where, where is this property? Is it on, what'd you say it was?
It's at, uh, 401 South Riddick Street. Um, is the property that's been before you in the past. Uh, the properties are actually on Riddick, Blackman and
Man.
Man. Yeah, Man Street. There's, it's kind of, there's, there's three corners there we purchased. And, um, unfortunately, one out of three will actually, we could start on. Um, the rest of them are all tied into a grant that we're currently, the town's currently working on getting approval for a stormwater, uh, rerouted stormwater because there's easements that y'all don't have that's going across our property and we're patient to wait, but
We got, we got, um, like 900% drawn back last week, so, yeah.
I mean, we're, we're, we're 12, 18 months out, but I'm kind of would like to move forward. We've, we've been working on this property since 2020 and I'd like to go ahead and move forward with something. And that's, that's my request is currently is to get this, uh, the townhome approved on South Blackman Street, to go ahead and move forward. Then you'll have to wonder what we're going to do next. You'll be able to see it. Do you have any questions for me?
You answered my question. I'm going to ask about the redemption of homes, but
That's all it is. Currently, we're just waiting.
So you'll go with four, hoping to get the rest of them in the near future?
Well, that's all special use permits per your UDO. Your UDO requires any lot, any townhome that you build in this town has to go for special use. So I'll be in front of you a bunch of times, which we'll, before this all steps up.
Just, again, for the record, Mr. Dinning, you, uh, are you familiar with the, uh, Mr. Imbler, the planning director, reference the findings of fact?
Yeah, I normally see them over here, so I
You can get those up. You don't need to go line by line, I don't think, for this purpose of the night, but you being familiar with those, is it your testimony and position that based on the testimony of Mr. Imbler and the information in the, uh, his, uh, board packet and that they put in the record that your application satisfied, which is the findings of fact?
I do. I do believe that. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Anybody else who wants to come and speak for, uh, for the, uh, if anyone that wants to come and speak against the father? See enough. Okay, guys.
You had a motion now? I make a motion that, um, we approve, uh, the motion for the request of a special use permit, SUP 2024 oh six, South Blackman Street, townhomes and permit, S U P twenty twenty-four oh six, South Blackman Street, townhomes, and construction a four-unit townhome complex. Is that right?
And then the findings of fact, and then each of them.
And then admit the full findings of fact.
Just that.
Exactly. If, if you want to make that party motion.
Yeah, I, I do, but it just wasn't on here. Okay.
A motion on the floor, uh, in discussion, on the table. Next thing is selection of a new member of District Three, you know, the town of Benson and Lake City, for a property. So, uh, uh, I guess what we're going to do is, don't we want to have each one, another and all of them, tell us what the party will be the, take the seat and that kind of thing?
Yeah, I mean, however, we all have your own.
And if the national board, you're not required to, I don't think the, the information or the, if the request, uh, had a statement about addressing the board one way or the other, I don't believe it did.
I, I put some on the application that they wouldn't be able to talk to the board at this meeting. Mm-hmm.
Well, in that light of that, it probably doesn't, uh, briefly.
Very great.
Let's go about the order in there, so I guess the first person would be Danny McHolland. Mr. Holland, you got to come forward and tell us why you want to do it and all that stuff, uh, then, uh, maybe somebody's going to speak last person.
Yeah, Danny McHolland, live at one twenty-two Lake Shore Drive in Benson, lifelong resident of Benson, served on most of the civic groups in Benson, actually approved two terms in the planet, through the planning board of Benson. Always been interested in Benson as a small child, never have feared to the left or the right, still headed straight forward to promoting the people in Benson and the town of Benson. Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions? Yes. All right, give us.
I got, y'all got questions?
Okay. So next would be, uh.
Thank you, Mr. Danny.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dan.
Uh, Mr. Dennis Gertie. Dennis, tell us, tell us, uh, why you want to be here.
So I, I put a lot of the information in the application, and I apologize for the length, but I'm passionate about this town. And, uh, you know, when, when I, I heard there was going to be an opportunity to address the board, I didn't know if you were going to ask questions and whatnot, and so I thought about a lot of things. I thought, well, I could say I love this town, I've raised my daughter here, um, we spent numerous hours on the Benson Little Theater stage and the singing board, or the singing convention stage, and, you know, you saw the capacities in the application that, that I have certain town, but I, I, I guess the one way that I would say that it shows as far as my passion for this town is, I spent a lot of years, I spent ten years working in Durham, I spent five years working in Nashville, yes, there is a Nashville, North Carolina, it's east of, or excuse me, west of Rocky Mountain. And when I, when I moved here, I was working in Nashville, sixty-five miles door to door. When I changed jobs and went to Durham, it was sixty-five miles, or sixty miles door to door. And it's a choice, it's a choice I made, if you, I, I kind of ran a quick calculation while I was sitting here, waiting in front of here. That means I've spent over a, a year of my life, twenty-four hours a day driving in a vehicle, and that's assuming there's no backups on forty, which we know is not realistic, just so I can live in this community. And so by the things you've seen in the application, the Christ Christmas closet, um, the backpack drive that we do here, the backpack loading, you should still have a passion not only for living in the community, but trying to make it better as well. I served with Mr. Holland on the singing board, and he's president, and I'm vice president of singing board, and it, and it's a privilege to serve for something that, that really is one of the things, aside from meal days, that I sort of identifies this town for over a hundred years now. And so I'm honored to be a part of that as well. And so I put most of it in there, I'm happy to answer any questions, but as I said in there, the thing I think that really makes a, a good commissioner is you got to love, you got to love being here. And I do, and I've made that conscious choice to raise my family here and to live here. I've worked about five or six years of my life, which was college and right after, right after I got married, and been here, and that's, that's a choice I made, and I would do it Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. And our third person is history, this is a church, how you been stood?
Good evening, everyone. Um, yes, I, I really put in application due to the fact I've worked with, uh, city government, uh, for twenty-seven years total, twenty-one years at the city of Sanford, uh, four years for the city of Raleigh now. Um, I've always had an interest in city government and working with it. Um, I've managed various crews, working, um, in utility, working with water and sewer primarily. Uh, when I went to Raleigh, even worked in solid ways, so a lot of that is in my, um, application. Uh, although I'm a newcomer to the town of Benson, you know, my wife and I, we really have just fell in love for the last two and a half, three years. In fact, we moved from one house to another mile down the road, uh, to make sure that we still stayed in Benson, because evidently we were renting out a room with the new addition of grandchildren and things coming over. Uh, so I'm, just have a passion for working with people. Um, am an ordained minister, uh, I work with people audibly and tirelessly, uh, around the clock pretty much. Um, and so I have a passion for this town from what I've seen of it, I see the growth, potential growth, um, as well as the maintaining of a, of a small town feel, uh, just like the city of Sanford. City of Sanford is similar to that, some of you may be aware of or may know about it. Um, I've worked on different boards there in the, uh, city of Sanford, mostly, uh, working with community nonprofit organizations and things of that nature, so, and my military background, so service is the name of the game for me. So I feel that a commissioner should be and have a heart of service, uh, servant leadership and servant first. So that's about really all I have to say. Anybody got any questions or anything for me?
Well, I don't have any questions, but I did read all those, all these resumes, and I tell you, I was impressed with every one of them. So whatever happens here tonight, Mr., I hope you will come back and apply for something else, whatever happens, okay? And, uh, because we do have other boards or, you know, other things if, if this doesn't pan out tonight, and I would love to see you on one of those.
Thanks.
Anyone else? I think the same thing, I was reading, I was sitting there reading through them, and we were impressed by all three of them. You great, great, new and older, uh, new, new reses, staff reses, old reses, uh, everybody, you know, it's, uh, wonderful to have people, uh, in our community, my people.
Thank you.
I, I actually went through the packet about four times, and I could definitely tell you all of the applications that you already have a certain leadership type file, so I was impressed with everything, and as Commissioner Holland said, whoever does not, um, become part of the board tonight, it's so many other board, other boards in this town that we can certainly use your help. And if we don't choose one tonight, if we don't choose one, well, we're going to choose someone, but if you don't, please don't be offended, because this was a very hard decision.
I'll just reiterate that and what they've already said, um, I didn't know who applied until I got back in town Friday afternoon and they cut the packet, and so I'll tell you, I, I was surprised by the people that did apply that I wasn't expected, and I was also kind of surprised by the people that didn't apply that I was kind of expecting to, so, but, uh, I've, I've been through all three. Um, and full disclosure, obviously, since I learned this Friday night, I talked with Ike about this yesterday, I'm, I want to leave the wishes up to the board on what y'all do as far as this is concerned. I think everybody that's from Benson knows this, but obviously Danny is affiliated with an office that I own in town, and has been affiliated with me as an agent in my real estate firm since two thousand and fourteen. Um, I don't know that it is a conflict, depending on what this board decides tonight, I don't know, but I believe in democracy, but I will always offer that up as a full disclosure and do as the board wishes on what y'all want me to do as far as the potential for recruit, recusing a vote, or whether y'all want me to move forward with a vote, that is totally up to y'all as a board. Um, and I'll leave anything else to Ike to explain.
Yeah, I, I'll start with the conclusion, it's not a conflict of interest, uh, either, apparently or per se, I talked with William about it, and full disclosure for everybody here listening, you know, I, uh, your relationship professionally with Mr. Danny McHolland, uh, could maybe present certain situations where people might have application for business before this board, say, development approval or something that there might have to be recusals about or something. Of course, I could say that about every one of you or anybody that could potentially sit on this board, really, uh, so you have no direct financial interest in whether or not any of these individuals, including, you know, Mr. Holland, is placed on the board. Um, I mean, I could get further into the analysis of it, maybe me too, but I, I've looked at it, and I don't see there's any conflict or any reason why you cannot vote it. In fact, uh, North Carolina general statute and case law is, uh, kind of stringent on this, that if you don't have a, uh, valid, uh, reason for a recusal or a legal requirement, uh, that precludes you from voting, you are required. So, I mean, if you don't vote, that's voting yes. Um, and just refresh, refresher on it.
So that's the same thing with, um, if neighbors and associates holding a piece of land, both of them are working on it, and that piece of land comes to us for rezoning, no problem, huh?
Well, no, that's different. Yeah, no, that, that, the, the most obvious and common conflict is a direct financial interest. So if William or if any of you has something coming for the board where you have a direct financial interest and there's a legal threshold of ten percent, if it's, uh, some, uh, joint, uh, venture or business, LLC corporation, something you might be involved in, uh, I would say any, any amount, uh, would be something we'd look at, but if you have a direct financial interest, so if, if you came to the board or if a, a business partner of yours came to rezonate property that you and this partner were going to develop, then you would, you would be required to be recused. You should not vote on that. Uh, you can't administer contracts that you're involved in, so you couldn't, uh, sit on this board and also, uh, be paid by the town for, um, some kind of service contract or something like that.
But one or both would have to excuse himself.
It depends on the nature of the contract, if it was something that neighbors came, uh, as an entity, and they both had direct financial stake or interest in the outcome of that, uh, of that application or that request, then they both, both potentially might have to be recused.
I think, I think, I, I, speaking with Ike yesterday, I, I have him down for me, so, so basically, this is basically the way it is, because obviously, we're, we, I own a real estate office, and Danny is a real estate agent that works with me. If I am individually working on a project that I'm receiving compensation from, that Danny's not a part of, because I'm the agent or my wife's the agent or any other agents that work with us, then Danny would not have to recuse. However, any project that Danny worked on, um, being an agent with my office, he would have to recuse himself if he receives financial, and I would have to recuse myself, because technically by state, I'm his broker in charge, I'm his immediate supervisor, right? Um, I think that's the, and then I asked Ike, I don't know if you want to go to this, I said, well, what does that do to a quorum? Uh, what if, uh, what if, what if one of the, two of the commissioners are not here and Danny and I are here, and then we both have to recuse ourselves? So that's the, that's the other side, and I don't, I don't know what, I can't really answer what was that, but that's.
It could jeopardize your quorum calculation, I guess, if you be down to four.
Right.
Uh, uh, no, I mean, yeah, you could still conduct business if, at that meeting, you might have to both recuse yourself from voting on that, on that item.
But you could still take.
You could still think about it, yeah.
Right, and with, with having a six-member board, we are the majority four, so it shouldn't make a difference.
Right, well, the board could still conduct business on anything, um, conceivably, yes, even if it were something that you both had to recuse on. And, and, and just to be fair, I, you know, there could be any number of situations where one or more people were recused, and there was already somebody absent for an illness or something, and there'd be a form being jeopardized. It's definitely something to think about. The big threshold issue is there definitely, there's no conflict of interest when you voting on the, the replacement, uh, appointee for the commissioner's seat.
Okay, how's it going?
Now, I think we need to decide how long, or do you want to, you will term or just go to?
Because they're replacing him.
Well, you can, I didn't know if you would call him for election.
Well, we have not, we have the option either appoint him through the next election in November, or the option to appoint him for the remainder of Mayor Rayner's term, which is three years from now.
I took down those places, I know we said, sorry, but I've been through, I mean, the board hasn't sent you up three years, so is that something you need to go on before you do it?
He needed a term.
I think it's something to discuss, because, you know, you, that's a, you might arrive on a, a consensus on a candidate, but if the term is something that you're not in agreement about, then maybe get that decided.
We need to flush that out first.
Yeah, is that going to vary candidate by candidate? I would imagine that that's the reality of this debate.
Would that change anything as far as that launch?
Well, and that's the thing, like, would you serve until November, and then we do our election, and then they would essentially have like a two-year term and then go to what?
The terms will always stay the same. If you call a special election, if you appoint someone to replace Max's seat for, for, until you can have an election next November, which is the next general townwide election, then that election will elect someone to then finish out Max's term. So in any event, whoever sits in that, you know, whether it's one person, then another person, or whether you appoint someone and then they run in a special election and are successful, or somebody else, there will always will be, there would have been an, uh, uh, an election in what, twenty twenty-nine? I think I'm right about that for Max's seat?
Yes.
And there will be an election in twenty twenty-nine for that seat.
How will that, how will that show on the ballot, the way that we, the way that our districts are set up? Because Max is from District Three, and, and Ms. Maxine and Will and I are up for reelection as a board.
You would have at large, and then you would have District Thirty, you would have District.
So, so whoever filed would have to specify whether they're filing for that.
We would have to let the board of elections know that we're going to have an extra.
But that person, like he said, would have to say if they're filing at large, or, yeah, they would have to specify.
Would they be able to file for both, or would they be required to choose whether they file for the at-large seat or for a two-year?
We're set up by districts, it would have to be in that district.
You run for it.
I mean, I'm telling, his seat, I, I'm at large, but his seat is a district, so it would have to be done by district.
They're elected differently, though.
Yeah, they're elected differently, so he's asking, like, could somebody serve on the ballot and have a district and also be on the ballot for?
Because you're elected differently for different terms, you, they're, the, the district commissioners are elected, uh, and whoever the poll getter is, 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 is elected in his, his place. The at-large, it's the top three, and they always run concurrently, so there's always the top three of vote getters are seated in, you know, in a, in a order. You couldn't run, run for both, you could, you'd have to pick either one, and obviously you'd have to live in that district, for the districts.
Yeah, I think you got to specify with them too, that it's for the district, if they're, they'd be given the three.
So my suggestion is, because would we not have to go before the board of election? We have to let them know, that's going to throw the whole thing off, because it is done by districts. Like, yeah, they run, Max, Cassandra, and?
Dean.
And Dean run at a different time. So now, if we were to switch it up, how's that going to work?
It would go back in lines, they would do a two-year special election, and then the next term it would be a four-year.
What you'd have, Commissioner Holland, you'd have, everyone in District Three would get to vote for whoever files for the District Three, if you had a special election, whoever filed for that District Three special election, Max Rayner's, former Mayor Rayner's seat, right? And then they'd also have a vote for the at-large, right? Then everybody else in town that wasn't in District Three would just have a vote for the at-large. But remember, whoever went, whoever won that special election next November would only complete the original term that, uh, now Mayor Rayner, uh, would have completed, which ends in twenty twenty-nine, right? I, I think of ours.
Twenty, twenty, twenty-seven. So two years.
Twenty twenty-seven.
And then, and then they would vote again in twenty-seven, and then it'd be a four-year.
So really, the first net replacement, three, is complete that term. So really, the first net replacement, three, is complete that term.
Well, that's the question we're asking.
Yeah.
Do you want them to complete it by November or do you want them to complete the term, the full three-year term?
We've got competition. And not, we're by special, I mean, a special.
Okay.
Election.
And I think that's probably the second step.
I think that's what we did for.
That's what you've always done, as long as I've been representing, about fifteen years. It's not that we do this a lot.
From, from the past, it's what we have done. I make, are you ready?
I'm ready.
I made, I made the motion that we leave it as is. The current person coming in, serve out that term and then running in at, when it's.
Twenty twenty seven.
Yeah.
So to certify the remainder of the term.
Right, yes, remaining of the term.
So I know, just to be clear, what we're voting on is to decide whether the person that takes the District Three's seat for three years and finish out the term.
Right.
You said that's how you would.
That's how, that's how I do it.
I tell you, I mean, I'm all about going for public opinion and, but we, and that's why we open up the application process, in my opinion, but I can tell you, I've been here seven years and I'm probably the youngest one on this board and it took me a good year to figure out heads from tails. I mean, 100%, I don't see anybody who will learn anything in the next nine months.
No, that's, I said, even as this. My motion's on the floor.
Okay.
And Mr. Lynn, I thought I was the youngest one.
What?
I thought I was the youngest one.
I'm the youngest servant, I'm sorry. You are the youngest, but I apologize. My, my bad. I apologize.
All right, so that, okay, now, so time for you to have the best perspective. Now, next is a motion, I guess, is what you need to, what the motions are.
Remember, but just, just for everyone's benefit, you, you know, we talked about this when we discussed replacement of the mayor's seat. And you can either make a motion for a particular candidate and vote yea or nay. That's, they've always done it in the past, as long as I've been, all the two times, I think, that I've called that I've been representing the board and a vacancy occurred. Or you can do a ballot. A ballot will be where you go down the line and I nominate this person, I nominate this president. If a high vote getter would, 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 would be, would be up for. Now, with such a small board, you can do either one and I'm not trying to sway you either way. It might be better to just make a motion for a particular candidate. You can have deadlock, right? So that's, that's more, remember.
Did you want us to show like a hand of votes or?
Not necessarily, it's like any other vote. If it's unanimous or, you know, it's clear that the majority rules, then you don't need to. You can accept to the chair if the board wants to go.
So I want people to vote up their, so either, do you want, do you want, you know, just each one say or you want to just nominate somebody and vote them in around or?
Well, we can, we can go down the line or we can nominate. I'm ready to vote whatever they do.
You can start from where it is possible.
You need, I think first for clarity's sake, everybody's understanding what you're going to do. Decide whether or not you want to move for, make a motion to vote for a particular candidate or you're going to go down the line and vote by ballot. Basically, a form of ballot where you say, I vote party A, I vote party B, I vote party C. And then whoever got the most votes would win. Again, you can do either one with a small board. The ballot method is going to be, you, you could tie, I think you could tie, you could, you could tie, I guess you get two, two and one, you'd have, and then that, there would be no, you'd have to keep voting. And the mayor may not vote in a tie of the ballot method. The mayor may only vote in the event of an equal number of yea and nay votes. It's in the statute. That means yes and no. So if you, I make a motion to do this, all the favors say aye, and there's even a number of ayes and nays, then the mayor can say, I vote, to break that tie.
It's possible.
Yeah. But.
Or it didn't change something.
Right, well, but if you vote by the ballot method, you're not voting yea or nay. You're voting party, I'm voting this person, I'm voting this person. So if you went two, two and one, you just, you'd have to, it would fail and you'd have to keep doing it.
Vote two, two and one or do you?
Now, but you can vote, this is important to note too, the mayor can vote to break a tie if you just do the motion and vote nay. So if you, one of you makes a motion to nominate or appoint one of these three applicants, whoever, you don't have to pick one of them, send them, you can pick whoever you want to, but if you make a motion to approve whichever applicant, and then there's a vote and there, I guess, there couldn't be a tie. You've only got five, but, so either way, theoretically, you could vote. All right. Okay, so. I think the motion to vote is what you've done, but in the past, it's a little more straightforward, smaller.
Motion and not voting, you guys are too soon.
But that's up to you.
Why haven't they been doing most of them vote?
Anybody else, anybody got a problem with that?
I just want to make sure that the advocates out there understand right now that it's been decided this is going to be a three-year term. You're on for three years from when you go in and then you will run again at the end of three years. And they go by things.
Yeah, it's their choice if they want to re-run.
Do you want me to make a motion? Why don't I make a motion?
Yeah, somebody needs to make a motion.
Nullified upon the motion to vote method, so.
Oh, I'll make a motion. We're going to do.
You did not on a three-year, but you got to make a motion on, on the camp.
Oh, oh, I thought you said. Yeah, I did.
Sorry.
So are we ready to make the motion for a candidate? Is that what you're saying?
Make this one.
Well, yeah, I'm ready. I nominate Danny Hall.
Is that your motion?
Your motion on the floor, Mr. Hall?
Not that, I apologize. It's solely for the record. I just, I just put it right.
Huh?
Do you want me to hit him for it?
Hit, I'm going to hit.
I promise I'm not.
So I, would, I make the motion that we nominate Danny Hall. Danny McHolland, I'm sorry.
Okay, so our motion on the floor. So all in favor, say aye. Oppose?
Nobody votes?
Nobody votes.
Unanimous?
It's unanimous.
Okay. Dean.
Okay, so we have a new commission.
Do you want to swear him in tonight or do you want to swear him in January?
Well, let, let's ask him. Mr. Hall. Mr. Danny Mc, would you like to be sworn in tonight or would you like to wait for your wife to be here with you in January?
I think you should, yeah.
I just want to.
Yeah, at the beginning.
Because he sat down that night, so.
They just, when I was thirty years ago, so they, they said, okay, they vote for me and this is, come up here.
Mr. Danny Mc, we'll do it at the beginning of the January meeting. We'll, yeah, and then you'll take your seat as soon as you're sworn in, okay? All right, thank you, congratulations to you.
And I'd like to say again, sir, miss, pronounce your name, the man.
Ulysses Upchurch.
Mr. Upchurch. And Mr. Johnny, we appreciate you both so very much and I hope that you will stay interested. I really do. And I'd like to get to know you and your wife better because we got a lot of positions we need to be filled.
Yes.
And Mr. Johnny, and that applies to you all, so.
And y'all, all three of you would have been better than your replacements, so.
Man, we ain't going to talk about that.
Y'all just keep in mind that November 2025 will be here before you know it and the elections will be wide open. And it is general, you don't have to be, you, it's going to be an open election. You don't have to be in a precinct to run.
At-large.
At-large. At-large, yeah.
All right, next, we got to, we got to pick somebody to serve on the line.
Can we take a quick five-minute recess?
Take a five-minute recess.
We'll do one.
Next on the agenda is the selection of a commissioner to serve on the line.
Angela are mayor, so Max being the mayor now is the executive member of the board, of the alliance board as long as my, well, as my so. Paul is the community member. Now we have to designate another board member to have a voting seat on the alliance board.
Paul.
Paul Boucher is our community, yeah. So Max goes from a voting member to an executive, so we need somebody to take the place.
Well, there's somebody.
Still getting.
Still eating barbecue.
Yeah, every time.
Every time.
Everything.
Nice one, there. See? The, uh, so, so let's open it up. What you guys think?
I'm, I'm ready, we'll chant.
So we got a push on the floor and we need discussion. So, okay, who wants, will be the, who's going to look for, will be the alliance board?
I, I.
Sounds me like I just don't want it.
Can you tell?
Can't, that's just another teaser. That's on the reason I said I think.
Next is to consider approval of road closure on the fifth of ankle for J H Jam.
Yes, so J H Jam is an annual event. We've had it for a few years now at, out at the Grove. It's on April the fifth of 2025 and Corinne is requesting that we close Parish Drive from, I had this in my head, look, from Lea to Johnson, yeah, for that, for that day. So I need approval from the board to, to close that.
Motion we approve.
Okay, I'll think. Approve. Okay, number C, we got, everybody got it, she knows the gives us.
Yes, and Kayla emailed it to you earlier today. And I'm sorry, we ended up going back and having this conversation with the staff. So as you see in the packet, we did, we actually had a well-received Moe and Ben this year. He was up for renewal, however, with the issues that we had in the previous year and we had to conform the checklist. I put it out for Ben this year as opposed to renewing. And we also took that opportunity to clean up some of the locations. Jeremy wanted to take some away, wanted to add some, they were more or less right-of-way as pump stations, those things. We did receive five packets. Four of the packets had everything in it that we requested. The one we had to automatically throw out because it, it didn't have all the, the things that we requested in the bid. They were all within $16,000 one another. The, the two lowest was Lane and B and B and they were a thousand dollars difference. Lane being the lowest, who we've used in the past, and B and B being the thousand dollars more. He would be a new, a new sort of, a new vendor for us. In talking with Jeremy and Andrew, Kayla and I, Jeremy and Andrew are kind of the ones that manage the contract and discussing everything, they would feel like, let, they want to give B and B the opportunity to do it for a year. It is a year contract, there is a renewal up in the, in the contract if we don't have any issues. There's also the checklist that we've created about halfway through this year. That checklist is a requirement, it has to be turned in for any invoices to pay. It'll be attached to the invoice. That checklist gives them and not, them to go in and check that they've done it and then Jeremy or Andrew have to go to the hind and make sure it's been done. So it has to be balancing the checks, it's approved by then before it hits up, hits our desk to be paved. And so staff is recommending B and B long pier services if you have any.
What was our contract rate when we terminated?
So, yeah, it was one or 127.
It was 127 or 129. I think it was 129, too.
I will tell you, one second, I think it was.
It was more than the, the.
It was more, yes, roughly did, it was a large one, yeah.
And what have we taken away from it? What made the difference?
We, we really honestly, it was tit for tat, we didn't really take anything away. Like I said, they, they might, I'd have to go back and look at all my emails. They, whatever they took away, they added to, but like acreage-wise, it didn't change that much. They changed the specifications on exact location based on needs and like what was overgrowth and what was being missed. But the contract itself in, in hours and manpower, there was no significant change. It was 129, 923.
So we're looking at a savings of eight thousand, nine thousand dollars, nine thousand twenty dollars?
Off the jump, yeah.
I made the motion, we move forward, staff recommendation to accept the contract by B and B long pier.
Here's motion on the floor and discussion, all in favor? Both, here. Next is, which I'm not sure much, how much discussion it's going to be, is discussion on the grant of Southwest Railroad and CSX construction.
So we had a meeting with CSX last week, yeah, Wednesday of last week. And it honestly was a, a meeting, they're going to change, they're going to upgrade the crossing at Parish and Railroad. And so while we were on that meeting, we had CSX, DOT, Town and Benson. The very first question they said was, when the heck did you change the direction of Southwest Railroad? And I said, hmm, that was like two town managers ago, 27, 28 Kingtown Bridge. And he said, well, it wasn't approved by, uh, CSX.
Thank you, ma'am.
So they wanted that. So I said, well, there is a safety concern because you are taking a left on, to, but you're coming out to Parish and you're taking a left and there isn't a, there's not going to be an arm there. So there's a safety concern for, for CSX if you were to take a left and you didn't know, maybe, maybe you're not paying attention and you, you don't know their traffic and you could potentially go through there without the arm. And so for them, it was a safety issue. I did also discuss with them if we wanted to change the other side to a two-way, but, and they were fine. But at this point, if you turn it back, you've got that, that round circular backing in downtown. And, and honestly, the DOT traffic person was like, I really could not fathom why y'all changed it to begin with. And it was kind of funny because she said you had a staff member there and I can pretty much guarantee who it was. And, and she was like, I asked him why we upgraded the main crossing and he was like, because I was told to change the direction. And that's what, so, yeah, but they're asking us to change it back. So I need to, I wanted to bring it forward to the board because I'm going to have some questions from some of the business owners and so.
Now, I thought we changed it two managers ago because it was brought up about CSX then.
No, it was brought up because of business.
No, because Railroad was also.
I, the, the way CSX stated was, we really did not, like, we're looking, we're like, why? Yeah, and the guys seem to have been there a while. It's like, this is not presented to us, we did not approve this, this, this did not come through. Because they have, I mean, that's their right way.
You're going to say that in the photograph because it was in the Moe and Greg's contract.
Well, well, CSX is one of those people, I don't think.
I'd rather tell them you get rid of the horns.
So let me say this too, because while I had them on the phone, we took that opportunity to have well, other conversations with them. The sidewalk that they tore up at, at the main crossing, they've given us clearance to go back and fix it because that was something we've done and they're all going to put it back. And I also talked to them about the Church Street Crossing.
Yeah, so there comes.
The massive holes that they have in the road over there and y'all see it on Facebook all the time. I know I do on the Benson community page, people complain about that crossing. So I did send him pictures that day and I actually saw somebody from CSX there the very next day. So they're, they're committed to fixing that. He said the, the orthos were like 2017 and he said, if they look like they do in 2017, they prefer need to be paved. So we'll do that. So they're, they are going to fix that crossing, but.
So they're going to fix the crossing, what, Church Street?
They're going to fix the, the asphalt because they, they find that their requirement to do. But they're not going to fix the sidewalks on Chur, on Main Street that we apparently added.
That was a veteran that we added.
Because that was something we did, not something CSX did. So they're allowing us to fix it back, but they're not going to, they're not going to repave because that was something we did, I guess, as a veteran. we did, I guess, as a veteran. And when she says allowing, she means we, we have to, Jeremy, Andrew, the guys have to get with the CSX, um, employee when they're going out to frame and pour it. Because for us to be able to work that close to the tracks to pour that concrete, it's within that, what, fourteen, fifteen-foot no-fly zone. Um, so they're allowing us to go back and re-pour those, but because those are something we put in, whereas the crossing at Church, that's asphalt that's on the track. Like Kim stated, when we were on the Zoom call, they pulled up Google Maps and you could see the potholes from there. So that, you know, really helps us out on that. So they're fixing those. And so again, it's kind of a, a tit-for-tat. We're helping each other out on both ends. So this crossing, the, the reason it really came up, they're, they're trying to update the safety of the Parish Crossing. And the way they're proposing to update it on their end, again, this was like an informational, they just wanted us there to hear, right? Because DOT and CSX are gonna do what they want in terms of that crossing. When they found out that you could make that left turn, they were gonna also have to rethink and re-engineer that entire crossing from a safety standpoint because like Kim said, it's not a full barrier, right? So that left turn was something that they, and, and it was really, that they do a longer arm, but that was, it's very. They also don't like that, that someone gets stuck in the track and the arm goes all the way across and someone can't get out. So the best of both worlds for our, all parties, including town residents, and parking, to be able to actually make that circle instead of having to go all the way out to three oh one or back around Market, um, is.
So it's gonna be like it was and you'll re-strat the parking lot on the, uh, west side?
Yes. We will redirect it the other way.
Kim, did you find documentation?
So that's in front of making.
Yes, and in front of, in front of the brewery. You'll come in off the parish drive and go into the brewery.
I don't even know.
Circle all the way around. The cornerstone, make it a change, it does, I say so.
That's correct. They got more power than we was.
They do have more power. It's just like everything that happens in their right-of-ways. They come back and, and say.
Parking on the, on the east side of railroad is their right-of-ways. So they could come out there and take that whole strip of parking away and say, you're not allowed to park on this side of railroad street. And they could take half of our parking on our side.
Yes.
Because that's all, that's all CSX.
Twenty-five-year lease that started in nineteen twenty-four, I think, and then it automatically reduced from year to year.
So I make a motion that we approve it.
Okay, and switch it back?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
See, several more, just, all in favor?
I would just say for the police officers in the room, be kind. I know that we had a lot of fallback over four-way stop signs and people were getting pulled for that. So when you pull people, if you do, be kind.
We'll try to do like a good, I don't know, retirement, but we'll try to do a, we're not gonna change it tomorrow. We'll, we'll do a press release. We'll, we'll try to, we'll get somebody to see it out there. We'll get it out there so everybody kind of knows what's going on.
Get that guy at ninety-five flip the sign. Better get him to flip the sign out there, too.
Next is the, uh, consider approval of the NCDG equipment agreement letter for Mingo Interceptor Sewer Improvement. Jay?
Yes, good evening. Uh, the first part of this, this is part of our Mingo Interceptor Sewer Project Phase Two. We are gonna be going underneath I- ninety-five, uh, just south of Magnera. Now, very local. And what this does, this addresses, uh, whether whoever is going to be the winning contractor on this project, this is, uh, part of their performance bonds will not be released until, this, this is what we call a whole harmless letter. They'll be addressed in their contract. If any damages happens to I- ninety-five when we do our four-jack across underneath the interstate, that they are responsible for any damages and repairs forthwith. The state, uh, DOT asked for this, received the request from them. They agreed to what, um, posing here, and I'm asking for a force approval for this letter to, uh, be authorized so we can move forward on our bidding process.
I make a motion that we approve it. So you can move forward now?
All in favor?
Question?
This'll go through before they start tearing up ninety-five?
Yes.
Next is consider.
As soon as we bid the project, this will be part of their bid package. They will have to agree to this even bid package.
Yes, Jay, is considered approval, filling out the project number or something, lead service line inventory?
This is for our lead service line inventory. This was from a future, uh, future, let me get my bearings here, previous. Earlier this year, we had asked, come before the board for our lead service line inventory, which we are currently in the process of completing. This was originally going to be a, uh, one point, uh, one hundred fifty thousand dollar grant, and the town's gonna be responsible for a one hundred thousand dollar loan from DEQ to complete this project. And we went back and forth, back and forth, went to LGC. We weren't getting anywhere, so we decided to pull it into, uh, into our SRP one thirty-four, uh, our state appropriated monies. It's a part of the sixteen million dollar package we received from the state last year. So we're gonna put this money, we're gonna take the lead service line of two hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars out of the sixteen million to complete our lead service line inventory for the citizens.
We're gonna take it, will you?
We're using it out, we're using the sixteen, we got the sixteen million dollar state-funded grant instead of doing, um, a loan. We're gonna just use that portion out of the sixteen million. We have plenty of, plenty of.
And it's not gonna take away from anything else that's coming up?
No, sir.
No.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
How far we gotta go as far as the lead service line, some discussion that we might have to out.
That's, that's still very much with, um, the state. Right.
Right now, we're, we're required to do our inventory.
Yeah.
And as far as we don't, the state still has not been able to define where we stop and the, the customer starts. For right now, we're, we are in compliance.
With me.
Huh?
We agree.
Well, we agree that we should stop at the meter as well.
But that's like, that's one of those things where the state approves stuff and they really don't. But I will say they have, they have given some more direction in terms of timeframes. And if a resident says that there is, they're changing out galvanized or their lines, we have a timeframe that we then have to go in and change out their service on our side. So there has been some updates, but in terms of what you're asking, do we know where that stops?
So I take it in our policy procedures in the lab, we don't determine where our line is and the government line is.
No, we do. Our, we stop at the meter.
It's, it's real.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean we don't eventually have to fix that. Currently, we are only figuring out what is ours to the meter.
Laurie can beat you up now.
Well, but, but that's, that's state, federal, federal mandate. So, and, and like I said, it's like something they, something they approved, and I really think some people don't, they don't, they don't know the business law enough. But like, but yeah, we, we ask the same question right here.
You determine that the town can go to somebody's house.
Exactly.
So, yeah.
But, but then again, why, why do we have to go down, what, some pipes in somebody's yard? When we're not, when we.
I just want to make sure we are.
It's been a law.
That is not where we determine it, yes. Unless they ask us to come look at it or test it. In terms of lead poisoning, then. This doesn't change any of that, like the normal operating. This is the, this is the initial, that what, we've got how many, how many?
We have five years to finish our inventory, and there is a phase two to the lead service line inventory, to the lead service line project itself. There's a phase two, which is actual construction. And we received grant money to do actually replacements, which we're fortunate that Ray has sixteen years of water service. It's pretty much what's in every street. And that's two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred thirty-two dollars. I'd like to take out the appropriated fifteen point seven million.
I make motion we approve.
Motion on floor, all in favor?
I.
Both, here.
Okay, the next one, since I'm here, is for the same, uh, fifteen point seven million dollars we, I submitted to the state to replace, uh, the twenty-four inch sewer line underneath I- forty to a thirty-six inch line, where we're one forty-eight inch four-jack casing underneath I- forty, and replace the twenty-four inch line with a new thirty-six inch line. It'll include, uh, three new, four new manholes, uh, to on each side of the interstate, and we're going to eventually abandon the twenty-four inch line. It shows signs of degradation and with the increase in, potential increases in size of the town, we need the additional flow going out to the lanes.
So this is coming out of the same state?
It's coming out of the fifteen point seven million. It is, this project was estimated to two million, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seven dollars.
How close do you think that is?
Very close. I had, uh, a contractor estimate to work for me, and I had the engineering, I got prices on the engineering and for the work.
How long ago?
Three months.
Three months? You may still be in the ballpark.
And there is contingency in this as well. And if you do have to go up a little bit, we're, we're fine on that. We're, we're gonna be left with thirteen point four million dollars and the sixteen million dollar fund after these two projects are gone through. Uh, as far as this, I do have another project I put before the, uh, uh, go ahead.
Yeah.
Yeah, I make a motion that we approve.
Okay, and discussion on this out? Um, here.
Yep.
And Jay, and by the way, cool hat.
Huh?
Cool hat.
Oh, thank you.
We'll give you one.
Okay, next on the agenda is, uh, Police Advisory Commission and, that you be, do we intend to do these all at one time or each?
Yeah, the only thing I need to tell you about, um, on the planning, um, we have two resident vacancies, only one applicant for resident. But, um, on the ETJ, you have three applicants. You're only gonna be able to pick two of those because we only have two ETJ vacancies.
That solves my issue because I saw Andrew Hughes that applied for both that and the Board of Adjustments.
Yes.
And I don't remember us allowing to have one person sit on two boards at a time.
They can. We have Ms. Jean Castaneda that's on Board of Adjustments.
But if there's an issue with planning and there's a dispute, doesn't that go to Board of Adjustments for another vote? So therefore, he would have to recuse himself from one or the other, right?
You can sit on what, there's nothing in there that said you can't sit on two, but I would say since he's, I would pick him for, I mean, he's on, he's, he applied for both because he just didn't know which one, if he could get on.
I would make the motion that we approve all of them other than Andrew Hughes, taking him up a planning and assigning him to the Board of Adjustments since he applied for both. And that fills all of our seats, or do we still have empty seats?
We still have empty seats, and I just talked to Mr. and Mrs. Upchurch, and they're willing to serve.
I think they are.
Mm-hmm. So I'm gonna send them an email tomorrow of what vacancies we have on the board.
So, uh, okay, we got motion on floor, more discussion, all in favor?
Uh.
Town?
All right, we got a couple things. I know, um, it's getting late, so we'll, we'll run through these hopefully fairly quickly. Um, first of all, town offices will be closed twenty-fourth to the twenty-sixth for Christmas. Um, will be closed January first for New Year's. Um, we, I kinda had, so I sent, so, by truck. We've gotten approval from Johnston County, um, building inspections that we can go back into the backside of the building. Um, still working on trying to get, um, some contacts back to, to do the basement level, but we're hoping that we'll have our meeting in January in the new, back in the, in the commissioner's board. We are gonna refresh it a little bit. We may even change the direction of it, um, but we're, we're working through that. But, um, in those conversations, as you all are aware, I've changed the locks on the auditorium entries because people were going in after we had marked them that they could not enter. So I sent an email to the board and asked, you know, kind of where we are, what do you guys are thinking? Um, I did have, uh, Commissioner Neighbors came back and said he would like to see some sort of lease agreement. So I kinda did have an initial conversation with the VFA this week. Um, kind of, kind of just seeing like, what do you want to see as a tenant in this space? Um, they really didn't have a lot to, they, I think they were kind of too thrown off on it. But I do want us to start thinking about that. They would like to be able to get back into space because they want to hold auditions like the first week of January. And I told them like, well, I had to change the locks, and if we're gonna do a lease agreement of some sort, then I need to talk to the board about how that's gonna look. And that's really gonna be a discussion at our first work session in January. Um, so I guess my first tumble is, what is the board's temperature on me allowing Anita and Lindsay, they're the two board chairs for the VFA, to have a key and go back into the space without having anything in place? Or do we want to wait until, and I, and I've already, I've told them already, like, you, you need to be prepared that you're gonna have to wait on auditions. Their first show's not till April. So you, you need to be prepared, you need to wait on audition until after the January twenty-third meeting. Um, but I kind of need to get, what is gonna be the wishes of the board and not regard, because right now they can't get in the space.
They don't need to get in there until we've reached a lease agreement, I think.
I agree.
I agree. That was it.
Can we invite them to the, uh, work session with us to sit down so we can do, work that out together maybe?
Yes, yes. Um, all right. So Kayla has a Christmas party question.
Oh, um, so Kim mentioned office closures for Christmas. We are gonna be having the town Christmas party December twentieth, Friday, um, starting at eleven AM. With that, we are requesting that we are allowed to close town offices ten, ten-thirty that morning so that all staff and all employees can make it to enjoy that Christmas party and time together.
We've done, we've, we've done that before. I don't think that's an issue. We've done it the past couple of years.
Yeah, we usually pleasant, so it's just pleasant a little bit.
I would not have, I mean, what, what's the staff's feeling on going, not necessarily going to a church, but what's the staff's feeling on actually going back to an actual evening Christmas party with families?
So, very, it's very interesting you bring that up. We've had a lot of very open and honest discussion with not just department heads, division heads, but with the staff. And, you know, it is still a mixed bag, but we are hearing more and more, even the younger crowd who maybe hasn't experienced that feeling, um, wanting to get back into it. I think this year, if we can, you know, with COVID, there was the drive-throughs, there was not as much of a gathering. I think in this lunch, we're trying to really bring everybody in and have a little bit of fun and games and prizes and have that feeling. And if they see that, next year, we are looking at doing more of a evening event to get everybody out and together. Uh, I don't know that this year, time frame and or just the busyness of everything and everyone this year, but I think by next December, we, we would end up with a really good turnout.
I, I'd love to see that. That was a good opportunity for me to meet staff and family.
And I'd love for y'all to come on the twentieth.
Right. I will say, I've heard from multiple employees at all levels that they did really love and enjoy all of you coming and being there and, and speaking. It really meant a lot to them. So like Kim said, if anybody, I'll send the invitation, eleven AM on the twentieth, we're doing it at the fire department. Because again, this year, we're. Y'all, y'all had a packed date, right?
You're doing on November twentieth or December twentieth?
December.
Okay, okay, all right.
Not November.
Is it December?
But I, 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 I agree with Commissioner Lex. I would love to see us go back to having our original Christmas parties. I, I'd like to see that happen.
And where is that gonna take place?
It'll be at the fire department.
And then we also want to.
That's when? December the twentieth?
Next Friday. Next Friday. Eleven AM. I'll send it to everybody. You good?
Is that in charge room?
Eleven, yeah. Fire department. Uh, and then the other thing, um.
I'll plug them.
We had a conversation about calendars this year. Um, and we got to looking at the cost of what it is to print calendars. You think we're printing calendars and then we're mailing calendars in about a dollar seventy of seven, I think seven dollars a residence, um, because the way, because they're big, I'm a little bold. So, um, hopefully, this is like a, we did it and hope you're not gonna slap us on the end. But we printed a hundred that will be available at town hall in the library and, or we did five hundred. Let me see. I think we did five. And then, um, we're gonna have a digital calendar that we can send to everyone. And the digital calendar will have more ability to be changed when we have changes. We can add stuff if we want to add stuff. Um, we'll still have the printed calendars, I'm sorry. We'll still have the printed calendars for anybody that wants them, but we've decided to forego the mailing of the calendars this year. We were mailing, printing and mailing eighteen hundred roughly calendars to every resident in town at the printing cost of five to seven thousand plus seven dollars per calendar to mail, plus the time of staff to stuff and stamp and mail them. And while that's, we still want to print five hundred because we know there are some people that want it. They want to have it. They want to put it on their fridge. They want to see everything. But in today's day and age, there also are a very large sect of people, especially a lot of people moving down to the area. If we can have a well-digital.
If we can have a well, digital copy that Tyler makes it pretty, you can pull it up on the internet, and it's up to date, so if there are any changes, they're instantly updated. We just think, you know, to be fiscally responsible as well as to provide something that all the citizens may be interested in, we're trying to scale that back, but also provide a new service in that continuous updated digital calendar.
Did we not come up with costs last year though of around twenty thousand dollars on the calendars and the mailing and, and I know I asked, and somebody came up with some figures. You were not here, so I came up with something out of the office, and I thought, you've got to be kidding.
Yeah.
Us spending that kind of money on calendars, and a lot of them sit right up there and never get out.
Yeah, so, and again, Kim, this was her asking for forgiveness. This was also me during the, the staff meeting. We kind of also came to that same consensus. We could provide so many other things or do so much more with that money. To us, again, it is the pleasure report, we will do what everybody sees fit. But we thought this was a really good compromise. Print enough for the people that want them, provide a, a new, better service, not spend that money on calendars.
In the past, they've used that as a themed event for them to do a theme, or they, or the five hundred or whatever, five thousand and printed whatever, they want to be themed every year differently.
It's still decorated, I mean, it's, it looks amazing.
License plates are gone, so I'm just saying, we're going up in taxes and we keep taking away. And I know a lot of older people that ordered that calendar, so just.
Couldn't get somebody to sponsor it?
Yeah.
What, say that one more time?
Get somebody to sponsor it. That's an idea for next year.
I know it's out there in the other corner, it's got a loan.
And again, we're still, we're also not opposed to those. If people come in and those five hundred fly off the shelf, we can always print another quarter, right? But like you commented, the boxes that end up sitting at town hall.
Yeah.
Tis better to not print all of them at first and see, this will be a good year to see.
Can we use that money to print some new trash pickup calendars? Because there are none on any of the counties.
We, we aren't supposed to do that, that's supposed to be waste industries.
Then they're going to breach a contract. Make sure that's in that contract and then I'm going to sign, because I have no idea when I'll pick up my trash and recycle. I just roll them all out every week. Or not really truthfully, the past three months, I've been hauling to the dump because it's free.
Last week, so no recycle tonight.
No recycle, okay.
Now, if you get on the leaves, I have no idea.
I think that's it for me.
Yeah, which side of town, everybody?
Congratulations to members of board, mayor, everybody else, happy Thanksgiving. Merry Christmas to everybody. I have everything else, there's questions there. But he knows.
Wish everybody had, hope everybody had a Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
Yes, be ready for the new setup next year for the board meetings. I'm saying about the, the, um, about the. The work session and then actually maybe, be ready for something new in the year.
I know that, I hope when you get to plan it, that you'll plan a better sound system. I'm serious.
Hopefully, this will be the last meeting in here.
Thank you, I'm fixing the sounds in there.
Boy, I could just stare at that for a second.
Being in the, um, town hall.
Tell them at the town hall, we don't have any speakers that are working.
I don't have anything, oh, Kim, so for the, um, if who needs? This is hard, do they have door panels? Since I haven't been in here, but is it?
That's the blame, yes. Yeah. So if anybody knows anybody that would like. Or if y'all want to donate, like y'all have done in the past, we can, we'll use those.
When, by the twentieth?
Yeah, we could get any donations by the seventeenth, so we have time to, yeah, pretty much pack them, hang it off. Send a reminder phone, we go, Kayla's the one right now.
Oh, okay, is that, did you jot something? All right, first of all, this is what I'm thinking right here. The new guy that's did inspection, the guy, what's his name?
Code Enforcer or Inspector? Mark, Mark Martinez?
I don't know, I am not real, I don't know if I met him, but I want you to tell him, that's right back, I'm going to tell him that stuff. I want you to have him in your office, um, Thursday.
Okay.
Because I would like to personally thank him for the work that he's doing.
Okay.
He is doing a fantastic job, because I'm telling you, the best over there on the street behind me has improved so much.
And I sent you all an email today, he sent out like seventy, ten percent.
Okay, hundred he sends out, it's a scary job.
Yeah, I forwarded, he was updating us and finding, like, the finance office know, and he let me clearly know. So I forwarded that along so y'all can see the work, he's working really hard. And I would like to add, all of this, I've heard of one person, um, in all of his dealings that has been a little upset, but he still talked to them, and I think they were just having a bad day. Everything he's gone out and done, we have not heard a single complaint. Yeah. From the citizens, even when he's telling people that they can't do what they're doing, they, they work it out. They, um, it's, it's amicable conversation. We are just as impressed, so. He is the perfect example of being in a job that he absolutely needed to be in, right? Because he's excelling in ways.
I want you to have him in your office Thursday, because I want to thank him.
Okay, you just let me know the time you're coming, four twenty, okay.
Four twenty.
Takes some time.
You going scared?
I believe in giving people their prompts while you're living. So I would like to thank him because he has really done a fantastic job. That's all I have.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm glad we're bringing back, uh, the Christmas get-together. I hope everybody can do it. I hate the ones that missed our little, um, our department get-together. It was, uh, very nice and shorter than, than it usually is. Uh, if you missed it, you missed a good steak. I think, uh, going into the new year that, um, I'm getting some things that I want to get as far as a profit loss statement, uh, that, that I can track something. But I really would like y'all to put your heads together, and I need, uh, or we need a progress report on jobs coming up. I keep hearing, okay, we were going to, six months ago, we were going to, uh, have our parks and rec. We were going to have it started in December, and I just want to know where we are and on any monies that we can't do anything about until we start a project at Water and Sewer. I know we talked about twenty-three, and then it goes to twenty-five million. We have no idea what the state's holding on to, uh, the, the fees or the, the amount changes. I need to know where we are and when we're going to get that first dollar so we can get.
We have, so we actually have submitted the twenty-two million, we've submitted three reimbursements. We've received two, um, actually last week, I believe, it was eight hundred thousand dollars for the first two draws. So we, we are receiving that, we're, we are turning in a monthly reimbursement. Um, as a matter of fact, I'm still doing it, Kristen's still trying to get caught up on everything. So, um, we submitted monthly, and they have submitted reimbursements for two of the three. And I'll do another one this week, and so the money is starting to come in, which is good.
That is, that is great. Now, so, uh, the, the town hall, uh, what we really need to be doing as far as, I want to see some real figures.
Yes.
And what it's going to cost us, because I hear, oh, I can get two million dollars, uh, two million dollars will not.
Right.
Refurbish that whole town hall.
Right.
I want to see some contractor that does this for a living, that comes in here and gives us a real figure so we can go out for outside monies, or people will look at it then and say, wow, I didn't know it was going to be twenty million, we can't do this, let's move on and do something.
And I'm working on trying to get us a said contractor, so that can do.
I mean, we're, I know nothing happened before January the first, but when January first hits here, first month in January, we ought to be wide open with everything that we need to be doing. So, uh, it won't slip up on us like, uh, trash pickup.
Right.
Merry Christmas.
I just want to say Merry Christmas, thanks for all you do, congratulations now on Mayor Rayner and Danny. I look forward to working with you as always. Um, so on another note, uh, I, I went down to Florida, so I was in Florida all last week for Don's funeral. Whoever in the town did that right up, the, the family saw it, they were very appreciative of it. I think Tyler's just left, so.
Yeah.
But, uh, so they said, thank y'all for everything, and, uh, other than that, I hope everybody has a wonderful Christmas and a Happy New Year. See you not on the twentieth in January.
So we, we don't have no meeting this month?
No, we don't have another meeting.
When are y'all looking at the, uh? Do we hear back from the school of government?
Have you heard back from anybody? We're still trying to get a mediator or, uh, that.
Facilitator.
Facilitators, thank you.
So we're waiting for a facilitator before we have any dates, right?
Yeah, we're still, we've given the, we've given some dates to the school of government for a facilitator, and we're still trying to get somebody back.
Okay.
And she's been working on that.
I would love to have some dates that you're working on.
Okay, I can see, Kim gave me like a few.
Okay, well, those few, I'm, I'm telling you. It's going to be busy.
I would just like to re, reiterate what, um, Commissioner Chandler said. I tell you, every year I look forward to going to the firehouse. Um, Chief, are you listening? Uh, I enjoy going to the fire department every year because he does a wonderful job of, with the food. It is great, it's always a nice turnout, I always enjoy going. So we need to give him a round of applause. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, lastly, I guess I'm it. So I want to begin, thank y'all for everything for allowing me to do this for a little while and that works. And one of the things that, we talked, me and Kim were meeting last Friday, and we talked about two things, uh, and, and really, I hope this is something we can do. First thing is I hope that when, in the future, when we have all kinds of things, like, like maybe even tonight, Dog Eye Road, let's say Dog Eye Road, let's say now, they say, well, they're going to put twelve houses out there, and they're going to average eight hundred thousand, and so I want to, how much is that package? You know, that doesn't mean, to the beginning, that means exactly, I just need to know a ballpark. When we get a building out there, I need to, what, it's, you know, for everything we need to do, one of the main things in the story, how much we want, how much we're going to cost, how much we get out. You know, then we decide what to do. You know, I, I was thinking while, when I was thinking about what I was going to say, uh, when I was in, in Atlanta, in the secret, like, they had these banners in the Georgia World Congress Center that you could sponsor. It was a little, you could sponsor for a hundred thousand dollars.
It costs how to do it?
So, hell, well, you know, that's crazy. And we did crazy stuff with it, and you know, we don't want to crazy stuff in town like that. We want to, and the next thing, and I want you guys to know too, and I'm not saying, do you like doing it? I know we used to do it, but I want to make sure that we, when a, when a person, citizen of this, and says, can, can I do X? I want you, the first word's out of your mouth, yes, no, no. I keep standing, I keep standing when somebody tells me no, and if you stand it, I want you to tell me, yes, but you got to do this, I want you to work with people. I do y'all doing that, right? I'm not saying no, but I want you to know that we, from here, I want you to do that too. That's planning, that's everything, that's ordinance, that's, that's, that's recs and police and fire and all this stuff. You know, when you're dealing with a person, we, you know, we're a small town, we're in a big town. We want, we want to be a love, we want to be a great small town. Part of being a great small town is not necessarily what we give people, but what we do for them, how, how we interact with them and how we treat everybody in the big town.
I make a motion, we adjourn.